Pleasure to meet you, students of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for the sick, handicapped departed and the military personnel of this community. Thank you. I will call please.
Mike Colasimo.
Here.
Joe Richi.
Here.
Bill Colasimo.
Here.
Bill Henderson.
Here.
Joe Burdick.
Here.
Tom Thurman.
Here.
Jeff Seitz. Lori Mollman.
Here.
Pat King.
Here.
Will Chilio.
Here. Thank you. First off, Gary Palmer, please.
Two and a half years ago, I attended this meeting upon concern about a paper rally that we decided properly that I inherited from my parents. Mary Wise was on the council back then, and we had gotten that grass since 1963 that she said, "It's yours." Borrow came up, and he figured, drain, sewer is draining, kind of Billy Butt kind of rounded it off. I am in the process of selling the house now. The young man who bought the house on the other side is planning to have his yard, what do you call it? So, you know, he wants to make it his mansion.
It's yours.
And we don't know if that's a 20-foot alley, or what should I tell the buyer of my house? Is that 10-foot? Is that a 20-foot alley? Is 10-foot of yours now, you have to maintain?
It's actually 10.
Oh, it's an alley, I believe. It runs north, north to south off of Ridge Road.
I can actually take a look on my GIS and picture it. Maybe I'll help you out.
What is the alley?
It's a little...
It was a paper alley. It's, now sunset comes down off of Ella, and turns at my property continues down into Friar. But years ago, in the 50s, it used to come off Ella, straight down on the Ridge, but all of the west end, PK is up there.
I can, how much I do that, I can also send, do you have any...
Yeah.
I can either you up a, odd point, so you can see exactly where it is now.
So I just tell the lady that buys my house, "Oh, you've got so many feet on the other side of it, you gotta maintain."
And she can petition to have that added to the deed as she want, you know.
Okay. There's also utilities that they...
Not yet.
Well, there's not really, that's the purpose of the paper rally, is utilities for the borough.
Yeah, there still may be, and that's actually not something petition to borrow for, but they can do maybe a deed line to evaluate that. However, if there's any potentiality of there being utilities still through there, even though the ownership reports back, all things being made, we're still subject to the right of passage, if anything is in what marks of...
Yeah, there's a spreadsheet that's on the paper. I'll send it up to you. And obviously, central point that shows this world right, so we never say...
Yeah, buildings for the way they're running, it's a lot of water.
Okay.
And I just, I thank you, I just have one last question to them. Those contractors doing the veterans farm, I know they're on a lot, it's, there's three signs and weight limit and that. Is that guy on the Ridge Road? Does he put a bond on there? Because them trucks go up the diner. Last three months, I worked on my parents' house. I mean, there's dry axles. I mean, you're constantly up the diner.
They're obviously not supposed to be doing it. We, I know the chief has ticketed in the past, but, I mean...
Right, the weight limits are relevant, so we don't have a weight limit on that road. There are signs, but it's meaningless, so let's wipe that off the table.
I understand that, but the road wasn't paved or built for 80,000 ton trucks.
Correct. I have guys up there, we're not going to spend hours on end up there looking for it. We try to hit it in the mornings and evenings. If we see them, we'll take, we'll take the matter in hand, but, you know, if we have other issues we have to handle, we'll put it down.
You're busy, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary Wise.
Here, here we go. Since two of my very active volunteers are here, and they've done a great deal of the work, and with all these people, I'll say thank you for that. They do a great job, those are proud of that. This is your last time, because this Saturday is it. Okay, we have a big birthday cake, I know, believe me, I know. But what I want to tell you, the little things that mean a lot, when a man from Alabama comes in and spends three and a half hours in your building, looking at everything we can have, then we're all of you, and see you, no, see you Saturday afternoon.
Thank you, Mary. Bob Friar, please.
I'm on those two. I see you.
I, uh, Bob Friar, probably four or five years ago, I think I made a recommendation with some virtual councils and drawings about placing additional paint lines, additional parking spaces on Bank Street Extension, it's a 45-foot wide street. I understand that they're doing that now. So a resident that I can suggest to you is, you should also write knowledge on what my company called name. The, I think that's a distance of about 115 feet or something like that, I don't know. But Mike told me that they're planning on putting parallel parking spots there, and I think that there's, you know, six cars there. Spaces in the virtual parking lots are about nine feet by 18 feet, here on the street. But, and on the parking lot on Station Street, which is ours as well, there's a parking spaces are angled on a 45-degree angle, the spaces only a few by one foot. And I'll give you a copy so that you guys can look at. If you would, if you would consider putting those spaces on a 45-degree angle, I think you'd get like 14 cars in there rather than five. And it's something, it's just a matter of dimension. I know that they, there was a restriction, and we had to get special permission from Mike, told me. But I think that one of the things to remember, when a car is parked at an angle, when its front tires hit the curb, whatever it is, you have about a two-foot overhang. And even though the spaces might be 19 feet long, the cars only take up about 15 feet of the space. So, it's the drawing rules, but I'm going to give you guys to show you that the extension is only a few feet over, I think with the parallel. But you have to go over there. And the other thing I'm going to ask you, the last time I was here, I'm sorry, Joe's on here, okay? He was under the impression that that PennDOT order to McCormick Taylor didn't involve pulling him to look into a new interchange on I-79 through the West End of Horse Road. And I think I brought down a copy of the certificate, did it very flat, the fact does. And I'd like to just recommend to you guys again, it would be important if this council notifies PennDOT that rather than another interchange that will be toward 75% of our consumer voters around the South Bay, virtual business district, that you ask them to instead spend lesser money widening Washington Pike from the West End of Horse Road out of Virgil. It's easy, but property damage is nowhere near as much, and it would benefit Virgil itself. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Just move on to the meeting. Minutes. Motion to Borough Council regarding the minutes of March 14, 2016, regular meeting as submitted. Bill Henderson and Joe Colasimo. All those in favor? All those opposed?
I wasn't opposed, so.
Motion carries. Estuary, all those, 2016 pavement maintenance program. Bids were advertised and publicly opened on Thursday, April 7, 2016, at 10:00 a.m. in the council chambers for the 2016 pavement maintenance program for following bid results. Alex Fairley, 10% bid bond, $191,280.75. Victor Paving, 10% bid bond, $199,220.10. Morgan Hestevay, 10% bid bond, $204,323.80. El Grande Industries, 10% bid bond, $207,849. Shields Asphalt Paving, 10% bid bond, $209,401. Protec Asphalt, 10% bid bond, $211,365.40. Youngblood Paving, 10% bid bond, $213,138.50. Millie Millian Sons, 10% bid bond, $213,120.45. Acolino Construction, 10% bid bond, $233,476.30. Michael Facciato Contracting, 10% bid bond, $233,276. T.A. Robinson, Eighth Asphalt Paving, 10% bid bond at $238,330.55. This is the street included in the 2016 projects are as follows. Harding Street from Lesna to Terminus, 50% of the cost to be paid by the Pennsylvania American Water Company. Forbes Street from Harding Street to Puller Street, 50% of the cost to be paid by Pennsylvania American Water Company. And Uni Street from Barreville slash Bluff intersection to Terrace Street. Funds available for this year's project, $158,000, approximately $50,237.50 from the contract price will be paid by Pennsylvania Water Company.
Make a motion to, 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 to,
or here. I've talked to Joe about it, I've talked to Tom about it. Joe has a few reservations because there is money that's going to have to be spent and it may not be spent in our community. But what they've asked is, they requested a non-binding manager level type response just containing a possible continued interest in the project. It's not saying we're gonna spend any money, just that we'd like to move forward and to gather some more information before we would say whether we wanted to do it or not. So that's, that's just what I'm asking permission to do.
Do you think there's a common motion?
I think he does, he object, she's, you know, for motion at a managerial level, we don't even make a specific authorization to her, they haven't asked for one, so.
So it would just be a non-binding, but it's just giving the board.
It's still work in progress, but conception, what they're saying is what, what, what we were approached with by PWSA was to allow, and they're gonna try, we've got a little bit of feedback, they're, they're, they wanna try to do so that every watershed does have relevant projects in it, but that instead of everybody going duplicative, repetitive, many projects, we can do model projects. And not everybody has to do them, but then your engineer, this isn't the workout phase, this is a study phase. The, your engineer would, for instance, suppose they did something in this watershed, but it was in another community and it was kind of the same kind of project that you might wanna pitch for your next phase workout, you could use the results and the math and analysis from that group approach to say, hey, that thing we did over there, this'll work here because, and that's, that's what they're looking to do. We're still waiting for feedback from D, I think there's an engineer, we, tomorrow on, I think, they're just asking for expressions of, you're interested enough to keep this forward.
Right.
Thank you.
The, the concept of doing this regionally and with K water source or Pittsburgh water source remains a lot of sense, but can we also continue to look at our community? I think we can demonstrate that if we can reduce inflow infiltration, and there's a lot of places right along our own community.
Right.
And.
And that was one of the, you know, when Joe and I had talked, he had said that, you know, and that's one of the things he wanted to take a look at, would it be better for us because we can demonstrate that in our community?
But I don't think I'm used to exclusively.
So, no, but, you know, or didn't we want to?
Right.
Join.
Well, the point of this was not to, the, the point of this exercise was to be able to do small test projects that would give you the data that we are required to get in order to propose the bigger projects at the next phase. The cost of doing that may be minimal to the borough compared to even doing one of those test projects in your, your own community at this phase. It may or may not.
We don't, we don't know.
It may well be, yes, in terms of that, hey, for the month that we're being asked to go into the group for the test phase, we could actually have a pretty good thing we may be able to do here. We're aiming not to one of the regional projects.
I know that, yeah. We're not sure. You know, it, it's just, it's just more information gathering at, at these meetings until, I think they wanna see how many people are involved and then, and then make the decision as to where the projects are going to be and then we make the decision from there. You know, so it, it's just us saying, you know, we'll keep coming to the meetings and listening and, you know, bringing information to you and then make the decisions from there.
And whether it works and how much savings potential there could be depends on how many participants.
Yeah. The other item that I had, and I think I touched on at the agenda meeting, was we did have, enjoy that too, we did have a task force meeting and what we're requesting now is a commitment of funds from everyone involved and I'm requesting council, give me the authorization to be included in a multi-municipal letter to PennDOT regarding the borough earmarking two hundred thousand dollars from the reserves toward this project. And what that would be, would that would, that would not just be the bridge, that would be Chartiers Street, that would be the, the entire project. Of course, Newbury is earmarking approximately five million dollars. Southfayet Township will be earmarking much more than that amount. And this would be over a multi-year period as far as we put this money aside toward this project, we wouldn't be spending that this year or probably maybe a portion of it next year. But PennDOT wants to know what, if the municipalities are committed to this project, what municipalities can contribute to the project so that they know that, you know, we wanna make it work and we wanna move forward and that's what they want from us at this phase. So I'm requesting the council give me the authorization to be included in that multi-municipal letter to PennDOT before our meeting at the end of the month.
I'll make a, a motion. I'll say. Anybody looking to comment, see what I add? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
And if anybody has any questions, I'll be right back to them.
All business.
I'm sorry, I have another question. What was the status on the collections? Have you gotten anything?
They collected approximately forty thousand dollars after I, after we spoke. So the delinquents are approximately forty thousand dollars down. Now they had a problem, the Pennsylvania American Water Company had a problem with their files and the buildings went off late this month. Usually they go out beginning of the month and they just sent them out now.
Did they give you a plan on how they're gonna continue to keep it down?
Well, I had originally told them I wanted anything over one hundred and fifty dollars spent in, as a delinquent and then ultimately a shut off. They didn't follow that plan, so, you know, the, the delinquents that we received were tremendously high. And now they're telling me they're, you know, they are going to keep up with it and to follow it and I'll be monitoring it and I, I've been talking month to month. You know, I was getting the same amount in or less than they billed each month and, and then there was an increase of forty thousand dollars. Those were the delinquents. So if you keep something like that, that's okay, but if it doesn't, then we have to get involved, whether we take them to magistrate or whatever, but it was better last month.
Just any comments?
The sidewalk at the railroad.
No.
I know that you have done, have been working on trying to get the railroad to.
No, not the railroad. I actually, I pulled up my email from Dean Schmidt, who worked with PennDOT. I met with the railroad and we found that we weren't getting any railroads. So I talked with Dean from PennDOT and I had saved his email and what he had told me last year, and I did send him a follow-up email today, was after the lane construction, paving was finished, there was going to be some handicap curb grant for, curb grant, curbs for all the borough. I know they're going to do some over on Dewey Avenue and up in a few other places. And when they do that, he said then they will take on that sidewalk and they will replace it. So I have that email and I sent him one today just saying, you know, I know the lane project is, is coming into fruition and I just wanna make sure that we're still on board as far as replacing the sidewalk over there. So the railroad's out of it, it's kind of.
Ultimately, I think the railroad's.
The railroad's a responsibility, but we just can't.
What do you think about changing the issue from actually fixing it to paying for it? And setting the cost?
Um, if PennDOT is going to fix it, I would.
This is in the right, this is the right direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, we discussed, there's some, talk in another setting, but there's some challenges.
Yeah, there are some challenges, yeah. And, and I think PennDOT's aware of the challenges and, and the condition is, is so poor and that's why they, they agree to.
It, it's non-existent at this point.
But it should, it just, it.
I didn't realize it was deteriorating from a, there's not really a sidewalk anywhere, it's just dirt.
Right. Right, so, you know, but that's, the, the lane project got pushed back, it was actually supposed to happen last year. So, and, you know, because of all the line work and that type of thing, but they did say after, after the paving, they would include it in the accessible.
We've got a whole, there's a good deal of concrete work for reconstruction going on there. The other one is the storm sewer, you're aware of that?
Uh huh.
Okay. They're planning on putting that into something?
New business.
I got one thing, I forgot to let you know. We've been using the house next door a lot for training and everything and just so everybody knows when they leave tonight, North Bay, so better right now, they've called me and asked if they could use it for training, so it's been being used a lot. Very appreciative of it from you guys, we're getting a lot of training in throughout the summer. And last, I've got some tickets left for the cash patch, so if you need them, please see me, it's, seems like it's gonna pass, it's coming up fast.
When is it?
May seventh. That's it.